Good evening, welcome to the City of New Franklin Council meeting. We're gonna start off with our committee meetings. We'll start with Resolution 24 R sixty-four for the Laws and Ordnance Committee this year.
Yes, we'd like to open the Laws and Ordnance Committee meeting at six P M. We have Resolution 24 R sixty-four, a resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a contract with the City of Barberton to provide prosecutorial service for the City of New Franklin in declaring an emergency. Can you say who this year?
No, we're in the middle of one.
Well, we, we got no payers, but I think that's a good thing. And so did most of us, the state, who said that experience. So all of our cases are prosecuted through Barberton. We do not employ a prosecutor, the city does not. So we take advantage of the prosecutorial services of the Barberton Law Department led by Lisa Collysh Miller. And we've, that's been the situation for as long as we've been a city. And the, we are just concluding a three-year contract, and they have made a proposal for another three years. I notice a relatively modest increase. Right now, we're at twenty-four thousand, three thirty-four. It would go to twenty-five thousand, sixty-four next year, twenty-five thousand, eight fifteen in twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-six thousand, five hundred ninety in twenty-twenty-seven. So we really have no other option. But it's been, fair and even good. We have a really good working relationship with that prosecutor's office. And not only prosecute the cases, but that law department helps us screen cases, makes determinations on whether, you know, probable cause, who are we gonna charge, are we not gonna charge. In the criminal sector, sometimes a case gets charged as a felony, and maybe it'll be a misdemeanor, and the grand jury gets resolved in some way that's satisfactory to everybody involved. So there's a lot of services they provide beyond just the courtroom services.
It's, you've been with them since day one, right?
Yes, yes, really, all the way back to the township case.
I guess one of my questions, I reached out to Sue earlier and asked about what our previous spending was with them. It looks like in twenty-two, our cost was eighteen thousand, four hundred. And if you, over the course of seven years, we'll get, actually, five years, we'll get two thousand, twenty-seven. And it's like a forty-something percent increase.
Twenty-two.
So from twenty-two is eighteen-four, and then we're going up to the...
Yeah, and that was a big bump.
Twenty-six, five.
That, that eighteen to twenty-four was a big bump.
Yeah.
So, and they explained it relative to their cost of doing a business, so.
So...
You know, the increase now from what we're currently paying, but we're gonna go from twenty-four to twenty-six, five ninety. So it'll be another two thousand, so maybe a ten percent increase over the four years from, from the current to the next. How many times a year?
It's about seven hundred dollars a year increase.
So we're good through the end of the year. You don't have to pass it tonight, but we really have no other alternative.
Right.
And in fairness, if we thought it was, you know, inappropriate or unfair, we would have barged a little bit with them, but it really was, given where we were for this year, I think we found it to be a reasonable increase.
Are there any questions? You guys ready?
Okay. That is all for the Laws and Ordnance Committee, and we'll close it at six oh three P M.
All right, our next committee is gonna be Community Development, Resolution 24 R sixty-five. Mr. Shaefer?
We'll open up the Community Development Committee at six oh four. Resolution 24 R dash sixty-five, resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with O H M Advisors for surveys of Lockhart, Sisler Park, and Anheuser Cemetery in declaring an emergency. Speak on the show.
Sure. Yeah, this is, this, we haven't, and I'm not aware, we couldn't find any previous surveys, at least in a kind of a cursory look, nobody had any recollection of any recently. There's a reason, really, for all three of them. The cemetery, at some point, we're probably gonna want to expand. Sisler, we're looking at the site plan for the possibility of a walking trail. And Lockhart, we're, we're looking at if there's some ways maybe we can improve the parking situation. It's not horrible very often, but when it's bad, it's not good. And that basically is during football season, where they stack the games up, and you have people leaving and coming at the same time. We don't have asphalt, we don't have striped lines. People park somewhat haphazardly. We, we got a price on, on payment Lockhart, and it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars down there. So we floated that with Brian Durnell, who said the Capitol, the state operating budget was looking for projects, and we gave him that one. And we're also giving him another one relative to fire service, trying to get some funding maybe for some additional positions. But in any event, we need the survey for there as well, because at a minimum, we're hopeful that we can expand some parking, and maybe level off some areas that currently are maybe mounted or whatever, so. And we got the estimate from O H M, and we did not shop this around. O H M is the, is the vendor for the Sisler Park assessment, so they're already working up there. And just as importantly, well, they are designated as one of our city engineers, and they just, they've been very responsive, they do really good work, so that's why we thought we could do that. And they can do it, and they can get started, so that's what that's about.
How are we planning on funding this, kind of the general fund, or will it be full of parks funds for Sisler and Lockhart, and for the cemetery, for the cemetery portion?
Normally, we would pay those out of the general fund for any professional services in that, for like surveys and more, or plans and things of that nature, just generally paid out of the general fund.
Is, O H M, are they subcontracting the survey out, or do they have the survey in -house?
They're in-house.
Surveys have really got expensive over the years. Just so it's on record, I don't know if you mentioned it, the total for the survey for all three places is twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars. Have any other questions, Darren?
Will there be any other estimated costs after the survey's completed, and any follow-up? And, you know, anything that they need to do after the results come in as well?
No. I guess I have another question, are we gonna put the standard pins, or are we gonna add some type of monument that, a spittle pole, six, four foot there, we can find easy five years' angle when those pins are sent into the ground?
I'm gonna say Brian's, I imagine there'll be pins to begin with, but Brian's pretty good with that. That took me right to Sisler. I mean, not to Bulbous Park. If you look at Bulbous Park, where it borders with St. Luke's, you see a big, big stone. So I think he generally marks them, but we'll have to make sure that we do that, so we don't have to go hunting for them in the future.
Oh, really, please, it really does sound easy.
Yeah.
We need this information.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Are you okay with three, or? All right, I guess we'll close the Community Development Committee at six oh nine.
All right, our next committee is Public Utilities, Resolution 24 R sixty-six. Mr. Shaefer?
We open the Public Utilities Committee at six oh nine. Up for discussion is Resolution 24 R sixty-six, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with 3B I T Services for an updated phone system and support service for New Franklin offices in declaring an emergency. That'll be looking to you for tonight.
Yeah, you have that much time to research, it's about ten minutes. Yeah, I guess first I begin to tell you that the replacement of our phone system, which is twenty years old or so?
From the nineties.
From the nineties, actually. So it's been something that has been that administration, fire services, police, and Service Department have been working on all year. The first estimate that we got from this vendor was from March of this year. So it's something, we've had ongoing discussions, there's been research done in a variety of ways. We're fortunate to have Officer Cole present to, did I say that right, didn't I? Yeah, I was gonna say, correct. Sorry about that. Anyway, I'll try to shut up in a second, which is always a good idea, but because he is so knowledgeable on this stuff, and he has really been a guiding force in this. But I will, just a couple high points, and then maybe you can address some questions, and you can expound a little bit more on it. Right now, our Service Department, if I wanna call the Fire Department, I hit two-three-o, okay? If I wanna call the Police Chief, I hit one-six-eight, whatever. And if I wanna get ahold of Brian, I do three-three-o, eight-eight-two, the rest of his phone number, I get the answering machine, and then I hit one, and then I get Courtney. And because they're on a different phone system, and have it always. So that's one of the things we wanted to correct. The antiquated phones themselves are another. This thing has bells and whistles that are beautiful, that we can put an amp on our phone and receive city calls on our phone. There's recording available, or not, as we please, on all of these, but it'll handle all of the needs for the Police Department recording, and so we pay a separate fee for the recording, and we're not gonna have to do that anymore, it's gonna be incorporated in this system. And among many other features, we can create extensions for everybody on council, so that when a call comes in, now maybe it's specific to your ward, rather than Chris, or Karen, or somebody, which occasionally they still will, they'll call you and say so-and-so, but they can also put that call in their voicemail directly. And you can retrieve that with an app on your phone, or on your laptop, or on your computer, or it can be sent to your email, and you'll be able to get those calls as well. And so it really will include council and phone service, all of that, really, with no additional expense. I will tell you that the, the one-time cost was seventeen thousand, eighty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, and they came down a couple hundred bucks for a couple different reasons, but right at the end, anyway, it's a little lower than the one in March. The only recurring cost here is the, there's a, let's see, an annual licensing fee. It's about the third item down, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So we'll have a, once a year, eight hundred dollar fee. Otherwise, the balance of that seventeen thousand is just for the phones themselves. It includes a total of thirty-seven units, phones. And then the second phase of this is the service aspect of it. For nineteen hundred and sixty-six dollars, that covers service for a year. And we definitely wanna get that the first year for sure. Whether we're gonna need that thereafter, we'll make that decision. The vendor's available to us on a contract basis, on an hourly basis, if we need, as we go forward, but we think in that first year of the transition, it's worth it to spend the nineteen hundred dollars and have them on board, and get everybody well-versed with this, because there's a technical side to it. Did I leave anything for you to say, or can you, do you wanna talk a little bit more about it, the process and how you found them?
So, yeah, so GTS, or excuse me, 3B I T is a company who we heard about, got the quote from. Their son, I believe, or excuse me, their father, or father-in-law created GTS Communication, which was our phone vendor for years. So kind of keeping it in this group of, this company, from GTS to 3B I T. He's been awesome, you know, he'll come out on a whim to update a phone that we currently have. But other than, the one other thing I wanted to kind of add on to what Mayor was saying is, in addition to receiving calls, you could also place out our calls as if you were in the city, you know, like in the building, per se. So, you know, if he said, we, you guys could each have your own extension, and you wanna call a resident, instead of giving out your personal number, it's gonna show up as if you were calling from four-three-two-four, or a number that would show the city. The app is included with, you know, kind of everything we've proposed. You know, you could just set like, available, do not disturb, you know, there's a lot of customization, so if you're out of town, you can, you know, basically turn that app off, you'll still get voicemails and everything, except you just not gonna get them. Or like he said, or I think, I think Diane said this morning, our system was put in, our current system was put in in ninety-six, and really, it's just been trucking along since. No issues, but just with technology, parts are becoming more scarce, so, you know, if something were to break, parts are becoming more scarce, therefore, the more expensive, so we're gonna potentially have to pay a lot of money to fix a part overnight or quickly so we have our phones operational. So it's kind of just looking ahead, but they definitely have worked with us, and this has been a project, you know, coming for the last several months, but I'd be happy to answer.
And we'll look up the Service Department, they'll be...
Correct. Yeah, so Service Department, they currently use Verizon as their phone provider, but because this is all I P-based, so our current system is analog, just home lines all around the building. It would be I P-based, so basically, it's all over the internet, like the server or the brain would be housed here, in the I T room, and then any, anywhere you can get a connection, kind of how your phones work. As long as you have cellular, you'll be able to kind of communicate with the city, which is how we're doing it for the Service Department. Like our prior department in station two, we don't have a station phone, we rely on a personal phone, because there's no way to tie into this system that we currently have, so that'll leave that. The officers on the road have the potential to kind of the same thing, they did their extension, so dispatching transfer calls, they're, what make calls is if they're in station, recording, it kind of does everything. And with it being such a new, not a new program, but a, you know, a, a good program, you know, there's a lot of bells and whistles, and a lot of customization, we can do to make it for what we want. But I'd be more than happy to kind of take any questions if you have any.
So our current system, it works off of like a mainframe? Basically, there's a hub computer, and everything's hardwired off that to the individual phones?
Yep, yep.
With this, there's still gonna be a hub, if you will, but it's gonna be voice over I P?
Yep, yep, same brain, there's gonna be a brain, and excuse me, the server, same somewhere.
So the calls are still coming in by copper, right?
Nope, it's all gonna be over the internet.
So how does, so if I call from my house and I call city hall, how is that being delivered? It's not copper coming into the hub here, and then transmitted?
It's all P R I, and with, you know, that would be, that is over my head with that kind of question. So basically, copper lines, telephone lines, that's kind of, it's called a hot line, a plain old telephone line. Those lines are becoming extremely expensive because it's such old technology. Phone carriers, A T and T, Spectrum, they're trying to get rid of them. So they're trying to force everybody onto the internet side of things.
So where I was going with this, you're getting right there, so what are your savings on phone lines that we will not have to need moving forward?
Yes, one hundred percent, it's all gonna be internet-based. We actually have been looking with Sue, we've been kind of looking at the details on this, and, you know, with, I think, four phone lines that were previously used, would cost us over three hundred, fifty bucks a month.
As you say, they're probably about seventy some dollars per phone line per month.
Correct, and we're, and that is gonna be alleviated, all I P-based, you know, we have a bunch of phone numbers, you know, allocate all through the internet.
So we can actually reduce the number of phone lines from there, because now you can consolidate them to the whole system?
Yep.
As far as the, I just lost what I was gonna say, I'll, I'll come back, in case somebody else has a question. Is the app?
Both Android and iPhone are selling. Is it their proprietary, or are they using a third-party, like, really central, or?
Nope, so the, the, the company or the service, I guess we wanna call it twelve three E C X. So it's their app, they built it, they need to just apply updates to it, their app. Twelve three E C X, I don't know, should get some known quote, but that's who, phone provider, that's who, yeah.
Okay, that, that is their app?
Yes.
David, can you also explain the, what we talked about at the meeting, about the backup for the, for the service, so that if our spectrum goes down, we have what we're playing?
Sure, so apparently, we have Spectrum fiber, excuse me, Spectrum Enterprise fiber, so we have fiber, like, running it from Spectrum, and it is like a enterprise-class fiber, so we pay quite a bit for that, but we get a lot in return, including good speeds, and then a dedicated team. So like, if our internet were to go down, there could be some speed and outage, typically, you know, residential, you kind of get put on a list, and they kind of make their way to you. With our Spectrum, you know, our Enterprise, we have a dedicated team that will come to us, separate from anybody else, and, you know, work, I think, I wanna say, don't pull me, but I wanna say it's like a four-hour window, they'll be here, if they detect an outage, they'll be here in four hours and start addressing the issue. So the question does arise, you know, if we do lose internet, we would, we would technically lose outbound calls, so anything in here, we would still have, so you could, you know, dial extension, you know, Mayor could call Sue internally, but basically, everything on the outside world would not work. But a solution to that is, I'm sure you guys are all aware of like the home, cellular home internet, so it's like fifty bucks a month through T-Mobile or A T and T, Verizon, they all can have their own thing. So we could place that, there's actually a T-Mobile tower right behind the end, so we, you know, anybody who has T-Mobile, we get excellent service in the building, and we would basically, we could get that, fifty, sixty bucks a month, place it onto our network, so that way, if Spectrum were to go down, we have a redundancy, and we're not losing any kind of communication.
So is that like a hotspot technique we're dealing with?
Similar, it's the same thing, it just talks to the cell towers, but the modem or the box is made for like home use or business.
Oh, okay. I know, I know.
Yeah, like a puck, you know, some, like our P E guys have pucks in their cars that give them a hotspot, this is more of a modem, like you could see in a house, but it was just sitting I T, or benefits of the internet, so we have basically dual internet.
Remember a couple things, one, you don't take any nine-one-one calls here at the P E department, right?
That's true.
That's all, okay, so then that makes a need for a hot line there.
Yep.
Have they, do you guys still use a fax machine at all? Some places still do.
Yep, we have, yeah, so that's, this system will accommodate that, sorry.
No, that's fine, so this will, this is all from all, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, so it's, it's all kind of over internet, you know, it is still a fax line, but it just, however it communicates, it communicates over the internet. So this quote does, I know, I did a kind of tally, I think Adam has two faxes, P E has a fax, and the F D has a fax, so I think I accounted for those four fax lines, but it, you know, could handle more if we need.
And then last, last question, I'm assuming the phone's got an in and an out for the com lines?
Yep.
So then that will actually, I'm assuming all the computers have a cat line going through them?
Yes.
So then this will just go in line with the cat line going through there?
One hundred percent, that's another good point. Obviously, I would say that hardwired is better, you know, compared to like Wi-Fi, so these phones, we would wanna see, and we plan to put them pretty much wherever there is a computer, 'cause that's how that works. But, and this company wouldn't even have to run extra wiring to ninety-nine percent of these phones, because pretty much wherever there's a computer, there will be, if there is a phone. So the line will come in, instead of going straight to the computer, it'll go to the phone first, and then it'll come, there'll be another wire coming out of the phone, and then it's the computer giving you internet connection on both devices. And you, you know, in the cases where, I think, you know, in the records room, the conference room, wherever there isn't necessarily a computer, there's, this is a newer building, so there are jack, ethernet jacks all around, it would just be better plugged with it.
And prompt last question, have they verified that you guys can secure the phone numbers and keep the existing phone numbers and transfer them over? Because I know some phone companies don't release those numbers.
Sure, so, sure. So actually, this is kind of a separate thing. So our phone numbers are supplied through a company called First Com, First Communication. So all of our phone numbers are through them, they manage all of our numbers for the city. This system would just basically tie into the internet and basically talk to their device. So we wouldn't, we're not gonna lose any lines, we're not gonna have to transfer any lines, it's just this, the brains of the system is now gonna talk to, you know, the phone numbers are gonna talk to the new brain instead of the old brain that we currently have. So, yeah, there would be no change to phone lines, and nothing would change on that extent.
Do we have to make some reductions with First Communication and A T and T?
Sure. Yeah, I can also, I have the numbers for that, like I said, we've been working, you know, quite a bit, trying to get this, you know, because if it takes one, you know, mishap, and this phone system breaks, and if the part's not available, or it's outrageously expensive, we, the city has no phones. So trying to look forward and come up with a plan. So like she said, with First Com, we had those four lines that we were not using, those four lines cost us three hundred and twenty-six bucks a month, so over a year, with us getting rid of those, that's almost four thousand dollars. And then in addition, we had a couple of old lines that A T and T had, excuse me, that we had through A T and T, that was one hundred and forty bucks, so that was about twenty-eight hundred, so basically, from this point forward, we're gonna start saving about sixty-eight hundred dollars a year, just by cutting out six phone lines.
We can review the recording, too.
Yep, and the recording, it's kind of an older recorder, but we do pay a maintenance plan, I believe Captain Cranger said that's about a seventeen hundred dollar a year maintenance line, so by us going to this system, we could get rid of their recorder, and P E will also save that additional seventeen hundred dollars.
So this pretty much pays for itself in the last years. I, I could have answered all of those technical questions, but we brought it up, I just thought it was...
It sounds like it's a three-year return on investment, and they'll pay it forward from that point on.
Correct, and we own the phones, you know, right up front, that, that seventeen thousand, we own the phones, if one breaks, and they're really not expensive, they're nice phones, you know, L, color, L C D screen.
Yes.
And, yes, I know, and we did look, you know, I did, I did briefly, briefly look, a lot of the other carriers, they wanna lock you in, so, you know, if we were to call Spectrum, they're gonna do a three-year term on the phones, after three years, you're gonna, you know, have to buy them outright, or trade them in, and redo a three-years-long, you know, term, so it is really good that we would end up only using them for a bit. And then, Mayor also mentioned the service plan, that was us having that service plan, for at least the first, I believe, two years. If I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong, the phone's got a one-year warranty, and I believe this maintenance plan would, I believe, kick in after that one-year warranty's over, so you know, hit on.
And they cover the equipment.
Correct, so I think maybe we'd get two years potentially out of the warranty on the phone, by going with that first.
And we are already taking a service plan to 3B I T, to, for the phones that we currently have, 'cause they've been our, our maintenance vendors forever. So, so we're not, we're not taking on the whole chunk of the, what, seventeen hundred, whatever it is, nineteen hundred of the service for every year. It's, it's, I think we're, it's about twelve hundred a year that we pay currently, so it's just a difference between that, that we're actually taking on.
And like Mayor said, you know, at any time or any year, we could all, we could get rid of that, you know, if we get up and running and we have no issues, it would just be available, you know, it would still be our vendor, but instead of a service contract, you know, we have an issue, we just call them, they come out, fix it, and bill us, so there's potential to save about two thousand a year later down the road. And I did wanna also mention one thing, so this current proposal gets you sixteen simultaneous phone calls, so, you know, from what he said, and kind of research he did with our current system, he thinks that's plenty, so basically, the seven ninety-nine a year gives us the ability to have sixteen simultaneous calls going on at a time. If for some reason, you know, we start going over that limit, or, you know, more than ones, or more often than not, we can always add to that number, which, you know, so there's always the ability to scale up. Yeah?
I have a couple questions, Officer Cole?
James.
What, what relationship do you have with 3B Services?
No.
And why did you start this process? Were you asked to do it by somebody, is it your own initiative that you're going with, or?
I would say it's an accumulation of my own initiative, but, you know, I'm, I wouldn't say I'm awesome in I T, but I can definitely see where, you know, you can, I don't think we have a phone in here, but you can see the technology is, is well-operated. And so just trying to keep the wheel turning on, you know, we need to kind of get up to where we are today.
Sure.
And it's not, it's not impossible, it's just kind of...
So, so you're, you're an employee of City of New Franklin, and you took it upon yourself to figure out a way for the city to save money and improve its services, I think that's fantastic, thank you. You mentioned that there's six lines not being used, that we were able to get rid of. How long were those lines not being used?
Well, looking into it, I could not tell you the definitive answer. I would say at least, I mean, I started noticing, you know, this is the project, you know, when we started doing this project, so I would say, it's been about six months I've known about it, and however long from that point, we have, I have to look into it.
Okay, so, so at least six months, possibly longer, have we been paying sixty-five hundred dollars a year, you said? Or lines that we're not using?
I believe so, yeah. Yes, between both four, the four and...
And then with, with our current phone system, it's almost thirty years old.
Yep.
It works, people call, we answer, et cetera. Um, it works, people call, we answer, et cetera, um, why, why are we making a change? Uh, we know that, uh, you know, in years past, or it's been kind of the, uh, position of the city, if it ain't broke, why fix it? So why are we, uh, looking to spend money, uh, or save money to upgrade our system?
So that would, honestly, I would say that would be a, a very good question to be asked. There are several, um, staff or employees that have issues with their phones. Um, you know, some say they can't hear in, you know, they can't hear other people, um, they're told that they can't, they're not heard. Um, and I've heard that from more than one person, you know, these, the, the physical phones themselves, I know if we need them, they're not made. So it's a matter of trying to use phones on, online or eBay to try to just fill that gap and get us a phone, so, um. I wouldn't say there's not issues, because there is, um, again, I think I said earlier, I would rather us look ahead and, and plan for the future instead of spending, I could only imagine how much on one part to get our phone system back and running in a matter of day.
I agree with you one hundred percent, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, how many phones do we currently have?
Um, so the proposal that I counted, I kind of went through all the providers, I would say approximately thirty-seven. I don't think we really got rid of any, um, we are adding two at the service department, um, like with this proposal and the one at station two. So I would say approximately, we currently have about thirty-five phones.
We can only get sixteen calls in, that'll mean thirty-seven phones.
Well, because not everybody talks to all of us, like, they're, not everybody's talking at the same exact time.
Do you, we, do we know what their extra labor per hour costs?
I did not know the per hour, the per hour cost of.
I got a little paragraph in here, a little bit that says any unexpected delays that it's not due to their fault. Uh, could, uh, cause an extra expense.
Sure.
I asked him about that today, and, uh, he gave us a verbal assurance that that's really not the way he operates. He's, the, the good news is, I guess, as the vendor was familiar with the, the type of service, and he said, that, that's in the contract. He said, but we're gonna have it up and running, you're not gonna see it in your showers. I mean, I get it, it's a prick, but we did ask that question and we have assurance that we wouldn't run into that. How long have we been using them?
Since we had his phone system, pretty much.
That's kind of what I heard is GTS has one installed with the system in ninety-six.
Nice.
And he comes out and we have a problem and he needs to walk us through it, he will sit down with whoever it is.
I would.
And, and go through it, it's a good co- that's why we've liked that company, because it's been very helpful to us and very responsive when we had a problem with the phones. Or just needed training on the phones.
Yep, and like, like you had mentioned, uh, you know, I have no relation to him, um, somebody I kind of started dealing with, but he has been nothing but awesome, just, he'll come out on a dime, he'll walk me through, you know, like I said, I kind of have some knowledge. So, you know, he'll, he'll walk me through updating something, so he doesn't have to come out, which is a service charge. Um, so he's been nothing but fabulous in, in the company, perfect.
I can confirm what Mr. Cook was saying, uh, one of our satellite offices went out and it cost us a thousand dollars and we were out for a day and a half before we could get an antiquated piece of equipment in there. Uh, we had to source from the used market, so that is definitely a, a thing that happens, and that was, my gosh, seven years ago, that wasn't today. So, I mean, it is, it is just older now, uh, that and the cost of the copper lines going up a lot. One of the things I do know, just thinking about how the city operates, um, with the app and how that works is you can, somebody calls into your number, you can have it ring at your desk, if it's not, if you're not at your desk, have her five rings, you can have it ring to your cell phone, or you can have it ring to both simultaneously. I could really see that being great for like Brian, who might be out at the cemetery or somewhere else doing something, and yet you can still pick up the city line calls, uh, and know what's going on and respond quicker, so I, I do think there's some benefits there.
I got a question once again, but, so the, the phone numbers, like the city hall's phone number and, how many incoming lines do we have? Like that, from communities used to call in.
So there's kind of a, it's kind of a, a double question, uh, as far as public numbers?
Yes.
I would say we have less than ten, uh, even closer to five, you know, you know, admin, I think, has, uh, a, a phone number, maybe two phone numbers, two faxes, you know, we have two phone numbers, so I would actually say.
I don't know about those public lines that the community calls, is there only like a few, four, five?
I would say about ten, plus or minus between the whole city, yes, that the public faxes do.
We're, we can, from what we can port these, the, the 3B IT or the 3CX system, we're not gonna have to get new phone numbers.
Correct, yep, our phone number.
I had problems with that in the past, where they're like, nope, we don't work with that vendor, and then all of a sudden we have to get new phone numbers for city hall.
I couldn't see it just because of how old, you know, how old the city township is and those numbers are mean something to us, so it would definitely.
I would just say First Com could say.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, we're not gonna.
No, because there's no issues with them, like, we're not even First Com, they've actually been very helpful to maintain.
Do we need them if we have this, what, what would they do, what's their role after, or, I, I don't understand that.
Sure, so First Com is kind of the, um, and again, this is kind of a little starting to get over my head, um, but First Com manages the phone number themselves. So between maybe the, this building and the outside world, First Com is the one who manages the numbers. This 3CX is the phones themselves, we'll say, like the, the.
Hardware.
Yep, and that's basically 3CX, we're only upgrading the hardware, um, that the phone's talked to. So the phone numbers are not changing, they're, you know, from the outside world, nothing is changing, it's just the hardware that the phone numbers call into.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else?
I just dropped them.
Thank you.
Very good, I can see another good feature too, I know at the office, we set up, uh, uh, lines where you can call in and ring at three or four people's desks at a time, so I could see that being helpful for maybe the community of your calling, as opposed to, I'm gonna try to call this person, then I'll give you the answer, I'll try this one.
So you could cause us what, ten for conferencing?
That's a good question, um.
It was in some of the literature, so.
I think he's talking simultaneous ringing.
Yeah, so you can also call in as well, but it can also be set up so it brings like a help desk.
Correct.
A drawing, and it, it call, it rings at all the people's desks.
And we do currently utilize that, um, like for, I know, for example, admin, if, if somebody calls the admin line, all of their phones ring, um, came with fire permit.
Yeah.
Um, it's kind of a hassle with this old antiquated system to get that to work, but this new system, it's seamless because it's, it focuses around larger businesses, call centers, and, uh, it's very customized.
I told you I had a technical chat.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Cook, thanks, sir. Uh, we'll close this, uh, meeting of the Public Utilities Committee at, uh, six thirty-five. Are we all, are we good to leave for three? It is assumed to. Well, we'll close this meeting at six thirty-six.
So before we start the actual meeting, I was wanting to get into our Citizen of the Month. Uh, this month, uh, our Citizen of the Month is gonna be Dr. Ben Pearson. Uh, Dr. Pearson was born and raised in Columbus, growing up in a city, kind of sparked an interest in green space with him, as well as an interest in, uh, animals. So I was talking, he kind of told me a funny story about when he was in, uh, elementary school. They were asking what he wanted to be when he, he grew up, and he misspelled veterinarian on the, his paper, and they thought he said vegetarian. So the teachers talking to him, he said, no, no, we eat hot dogs, you know, we eat meat, so then that's when he said I was veterinarian. But, uh, it's a pretty interesting conversation with, with Dr. Pearson. Uh, he attended the Ohio State University, where he got his undergraduate in agriculture, and that's where he also met his wife. Uh, he's been married to her for forty-five years. Upon completing his, his undergraduate degree, uh, the college was not accepting any new applicants. They, they were full of applicants for the veterinary medicine, uh, route, so he ended up, uh, applying to a handful of colleges abroad. Uh, he got accepted to a, a few of them, and he chose to attend college in Italy. He was there for a few years before finding the space back at Ohio State to finish out his degree there. Uh, he graduated in, uh, nineteen eighty-five and opened his, his practice here in town, the Manchester Animal Clinic, about that same time. Uh, being a small business owner, gave him the opportunity to join the board of the, we found it here, let me make sure I get this right, the National Federation of Independent Businesses. What they do is, they are basically an advocate group, a voice, and he's on the, the, uh, chairing committee there, where they, uh, they have input and policy that affects small businesses. So it's not just stuff he's doing for the community, it's stuff for the entire state, where he's got a voice and they, they help guide these policies, they don't have negative impacts on businesses. And then on top of that, he's also involved, I've seen where he's had some Juana's work, uh, he's also a member of the Summit County Farm Bureau, and just recently he got awarded as, uh, an honor of distinction for service, which is the highest award. Uh, I know he's very involved with not only his practice here and, and helping other people in the community, but he's just been a great asset to have in the community, and that's one of the reasons that, uh, you know, you were actually recognized in this award. He's also on the PPG Advisory Committee, uh, trying to think if I missed anything last year. Uh, once he, I mentioned, he's been married to his wife for forty-five years, they have a farm here in town, and they raise two daughters and a son.
One grandbabies, they get grandbabies, is that right?
Seven, seven.
Seven grandbabies, and they're all, he's all grandpa to them.
So, yeah, if I, if I could, Dr. Pearson?
Walk with a big stick here. You go to a restaurant, they ask you to take this and set it down, where you gotta meet the waiter or waitress or whoever, it's way up there. Now, I'm just gonna say, as, as you approach, uh, you folks know that people have been here a long time, this, this man is an institution. Am I right?
Oh, amen.
An institution here in, in, in New Franklin, and, uh, well, well-earned, well-deserved, we appreciate you.
Well, I was a city boy there, so I could never figure out how you put an electric motor in a well with water, like the electric. And we had sewers, and, you know, you flush the toilet, it's gone, I couldn't understand how an out, how, well, I do know an outhouse work, but, uh, how a septic system works, so, you know, I get that pumped every year, so I see how that works, so. So learned a few things there. And then in the city, you know, you're, right, you know, when you cough, people five, five houses down there hear you or whatever, and, uh, here, you know, you can cough and, hey, you, you got a little light space there, so it's a nice community there, it's growing there, you know. I, I think the township originally was like eighteen oh seven or something like that, and, you know, twenty seventeen became the city there, so.
Well, I understand this, and you may have had the same experience, we haven't had cuts for, for a, a number of years, but one of the last ones that I had, it was a number of years ago, uh, the doctor helped us say goodbye, and, uh, with, uh, a lot of compassion, and, and, and I, I know so many people in the city have experienced that as well, uh, and that's a very important thing.
Pets are members of your family, they all said, I could do some love there.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
All right, okay, thanks a lot, appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call it ordered, the City of New Franklin Council meeting, please join in and collect the regents.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we, do you call more, please?
Mr. Cott.
President.
Mr. Shaker.
President.
Mrs. Jones. Mr. Powell.
President.
Mr. Stiles.
President.
Mr. Wolf.
President.
Mr. Almond.
President.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of October second, two thousand twenty-four. You have a first and a second, go ahead.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the approval of financials for September two thousand twenty-four?
Motion, approve.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
All right, next we move on to the public comments section, uh, if you have any public comments, please, uh, state your name, address, and if you would, just keep it a form. All right, we'll close public comments, and we move on to our second agenda, uh, Resolution twenty-four R sixty-four, go ahead.
A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into an agreement with the City of Barberton to provide prosecutorial services for the City of New Franklin and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Laws and Ordinances Committee, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Shall we have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four R sixty-four.
Second.
Shall we have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero, Resolution twenty-four R sixty-five, go ahead.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with OHM advisors for the survey of Lockhart Fields, Sisler Park, and Manchester Cemetery and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was brought before, uh, Committee Development Committee and I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution twenty-four dash R dash sixty-five.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes, but, Resolution passes seven to zero, Resolution twenty-four R sixty-six, go ahead.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with 3B IT services for an updated phone system in support service for the New Franklin offices and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Public Utilities Committee, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four R sixty-six.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Almond.
Yes.
Mr. Cott.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes, Resolution passes seven to zero. Okay, we have the first or second, uh, readings, pending legislation, on to our favorite part of the reading, the main event.
All right, thank you, uh, let's see, first of all, uh, one word, Oktoberfest, uh, it was fabulous, uh, the good Lord blessed us again. You know, the forecast was horrible, I mentioned to somebody, I woke up about three-thirty that morning, and, uh, it was, the rain was coming down, it was lightning, and I said, we're gonna have to call this thing off, uh, and by the time we got to Oktoberfest time, it really was just a beautiful fall day. Uh, and, uh, we had, I had posted something, twenty-some volunteers we had that made this happen. Uh, some of you are seated up there right now, uh, and very much appreciated, um, and I think, yeah, we, we got, nothing but rave reviews. Uh, so many people, and we hear this every time, uh, we hear people that, you know, that they're coming back, and then we hear people that were there for the first time, and we hear people, we didn't even know this place was back here. So it's starting, it really, really, it just continues to grow, so, uh, thanks to everybody who made that such a wonderful event. Um, the, uh, as you've read in the paper, even though they have the wrong date, the Water Nine Hearing is back on, um, for a continuation of the public hearing, and that's gonna be, uh, next Thursday, October twenty-fourth, at six-thirty, uh, at Manchester Christian Church. The, uh, uh, the proposal, the, uh, there, there haven't been any significant changes to the project. Uh, there's been some tweaking based upon some, uh, some, uh, issues and questions that were raised, uh, and. Uh, and the revisions have been provided, were provided a couple weeks ago, planning and zoning. Uh, I think you're up on the site, if they're not, I'll make sure they're on the website. There's not much that you're gonna see. Uh, probably for me, the most notable is the addition of a multipurpose trail on the west side of Point Comfort um, that will run the length of that, that area to keep pedestrians, walkers, um, golf carts, whatever, off the roadway. All right, and there are also, we are in the process of scheduling a continuation of the Tudor House conditional use application. So, that, we had a first hearing, uh, and we're trying to squeeze that in, and we might have done it on the twenty-fourth. Well, we got, there's a third thing stacked up here for planning and zoning, and that's continuing, uh, the revision to the zoning code. Uh, and we're in the, you know, ready to move into phase two with, uh, the more substantive parts. Uh, so, uh, we're now looking for a date that, uh, that will suit planning and zoning to get both of those things scheduled likely on, and it may be the same night, I don't know, we'll find out, depends on what they want to do. They can certainly hear both issues on the same night. They've heard most of the testimony relative to the conditional use. The, I think there's gonna be some supplement of those records, but in any event, uh, and I, and that first hearing on the revisions is really just gonna be a workshop. And, uh, those materials are pretty much in final form, as far as what the suggestions are gonna be. I'm not gonna see anything particularly earth-shattering. Uh, and I think what we've talked about with Fred is possibly doing a sort of a preview of that here at City Council, uh, sort of contemporaneous with the public workshop, uh, so that there can be, we can start the discussion early. I think really the key on this one is, and what we're gonna try to, when I say we, I'm talking about the zoning office, et cetera, uh, is to try to get everybody engaged at the, at the zoning, at the public hearing portion of this. Not to say you won't have further questions when it reaches public hearing here, but we may not have done a good job on that and some of the other things. And so, a lot of the questions that came up and were addressed, the planning and zoning had an opportunity to speak on and make decisions on. By the time you came here for public hearing, you didn't have, unless, and many of you came, but if you weren't there for all of it, you didn't hear some of that discussion. So, just to, uh, to be more efficient. Uh, we're gonna try to preview it a little bit more and move that along. So, uh, we'll give you dates on those as soon as we have. The code, uh, that light reading we gave you, bedtime reading, uh, you have that. Um, please continue to take a look through it. As I said, uh, there's, you know, there's really not much that's, I don't have anything original. It's really, it's an adoption of what we already have. Uh, you'll see some, we, I sent some of the revisions, the latest revisions to the zoning code down to the code people, and they're gonna incorporate those. We adopted last year, I think. There are changes, the mandatory required changes we have to the tax code, so those are gonna be updated from the document that you already have. And then beyond that, it's really a matter of looking through the traffic code, looking through the criminal code. This is what, these are the laws that we're, that we're abiding by and citing under right now. Uh, and there's gonna be, uh, there's a little bit of configuration to add the noise ordinance in or a little bit, to sort of make it a little bit more efficient. So, we're working, there'll be a few more tweaks to that. And we'll get those tweaks to you, and then we'll try to move that thing and get that adopted. All right, the grants, then sewer, then water, uh, is, we, you know, sometimes, I've talked to so many people, we've had so many Zooms lately. I can't remember sometimes who I've spoken to, so I know I've previewed some of this with you, so let me just try to short-form it. Two different projects, uh, the State Route ninety-three sewer project. And, uh, specific for this conversation here is the three million dollar federal grant money that we have for that project. And that's about a twelve million dollar project, and we were, we had funds secured for a little bit over ten million, and we had a funding gap of around one point eight million. Uh, and, uh, and there has been a change in the, as I indicated to you, in the engineering and the design. Uh, instead of a, instead of a pump station on Vanderhoof, and a conversion of the package plan on Zellray to a pump station. They've determined that they can get by with just one pump station, the one at Zellray. So, that conversion is gonna take place. You no longer have to spend the money on the, on pump station on Vanderhoof. On the original plan, the sewer extension, and really the major component, I believe, for the city, is the sewer on State Route ninety-three. And that sewer, that flow was gonna go to Vanderhoof. With this conversion of the engineering and the design, that flow will now go to Zellray. Uh, and, uh, and then from Zellray, when they install the pump station, it'll go up to Vanderhoof. Uh, there is, uh, Zellray has a capacity of thirty-two thousand gallons. It's currently operating at about fifteen thousand. And that fifteen thousand, there's all those neighborhoods, all those neighborhoods above the package plan. Uh, and McDonald's and the, and the condo, you know, the apartment, so there, it's, you know, there's a lot of flow for just fifteen thousand gallons. So, there's a lot of capacity available there. So, it's so much to the degree that, uh, that we can do this phase and connect those lines to go to Zellray uh, as a first phase. We have, um, we have some really good opportunity to get the balance of funding in the next federal funding cycle, which will probably be in strength. We can pre-approve for three million, uh, which would cap us off. Uh, but in the meantime, while we wait for that, we can do this phase. Uh, and the three million, we can use towards that phase because the estimates have remained at about two point eight million. So, all of this, the grant is administered with the federal EPA. Uh, and we've been talking with the federal EPA, and we've had a conversation, teams with them, with the county, uh, with the engineers who are assisting us in the environmental component. Uh, and there is a, there is an environmental, it's a different environmental component, as some of you know, when you're using federal money. So, we have, uh, so we had these teams, this is Wednesday, I guess it was Monday, uh, and we got the go-ahead, basically. Uh, and it looks like we're also potentially gonna be, uh, eligible for a categorical exemption from the full NEPA, and you may remember that in the aftermath, because we approved the funding for Arcatis to help us with that report. Because it appears all of the, uh, the full extension is gonna go on what's known as pre-disturbed land. And so, the EPA is mostly concerned with, uh, wetlands, forests, wooded areas, et cetera, that get disturbed. All right, so, in any event, it, it appears that that can be an expedite process. We have to submit all these documents, and it's technical, uh, to the EPA. And we should get a relatively quick turnaround, and then we, the final piece is the approval through grants.gov, and then the funds become available. Uh, we can proceed and will proceed with the bidding aspect of it while we're waiting for that part of it. And in the best-case scenario, by spring, uh, we have approval, the funds are freed up, and we can start construction. Uh, which, for that component, we anticipate to be about a year. So, we could be in a situation, hope to be in a situation, where we got sewer out here by the summer of twenty-sixth. The three million dollars is a eighty-twenty, uh, grant, uh, and it is a reimbursement grant. Uh, and the city is the grantee. So, once the project is in place and the, and contractors have been selected, and the work starts, and the invoices come in, New Franklin will pay the invoice, and then upon presentation of the invoice, will receive eighty percent of that back from the federal government. The, our discussions with Summit County have been, and you'll be seeing an MOU pretty soon on this, is that the county then would reimburse us for the other twenty percent, uh, as their share of this project, uh, which would mean that there would be no expense from the city. When, when, when we first went through all this on Monday, and so that all sounds good, but we gotta have a million dollars to pay this out. Three million dollars. The good news is that we got three point eight million from the state. And those funds are for our sewer and water projects. Uh, and they are available for exactly that purpose. Uh, so we're not going to have to deviate into general fund money to fund it and then get the money back. Actually, the, the cost is two point eight million is what they anticipate on this. So, we look to be able to fully reimburse that fund, and eventually, those funds then will be used for the balance of the project. So, that's what's going on there, and we're on a pretty good timeline. Really, an accelerated timeline. We thought it'd be March before the, the NEPA was even done. So, we're working really hard on that one. It's taking a lot of energy, it's taking a lot of time, and it's, uh, but we're very happy with where we are right this moment. Uh, the second one I'm gonna tell you about is the water to the visitor center. And that's the one we had nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant for. We had asked for three point seven million for sewer and water. Uh, we got nine hundred and seventy thousand, cheap space. Uh, and, um, and so, we, and, and we're dealing with ODNR, who is on a pretty tight timeline for their five million dollar event, uh, event center. Uh, and so, there was, we don't have the money for it anyway, but there was really no way for them to reconfigure the sewer, uh, to get that piece in place, to use any of these funds for the sewer. But we were in time, assuming we meet the, the timeline, and I'm having those discussions, uh, daily with ODNR, uh, to do the water aspect of it. And, and that grant was to bring water to the ODNR visitor center, to the Tudor House, the event center, and the Tudor House itself, uh, and also to make it available to St. Luke's, which in the past, they've talked to us about some expansion over there. Uh, and we're more invested actually in water than they were sewer, because they got a package plant. Uh, but in any event, uh, we had that conversation, and that, and we talked with Aqua, we've been talking with them last, you know, the last week or two. Um, they priced that out somewhere in a range of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I figured even with some overages, should be nowhere near, you know, eight hundred, uh, somewhere in that range. Uh, so, we confirmed in this conference call with the EPA that our nine hundred and seventy thousand can be used for that project. Uh, and it'll bring water to the, uh, it'll go through the neighborhoods now. Uh, it's currently at Catalina and, uh, and Encino. And it'll come up Encino, it'll go up Brahmins, it'll go down Latham. Uh, and it'll be, and it'll stop right at the, it'll be available for tie-in from the, for the event center, uh, and then it'll be right there at the doorstep of the state park. Again, uh, it looks like we'll, we'll get the exemption on this because, again, it's all pre-disturbed land. So, this one should happen, I think we're gonna be able to meet the timeline on this. Again, it's an eighty-twenty. Uh, again, the city will have to pay the invoices that come in. The math comes out just about right on the button. We've got two point eight over here, and we've got nine over here, and that comes out to three point seven, and we got three point eight. Um, we, Aqua has agreed, uh, it's not on paper yet, that they would reimburse us then for the twenty percent. Yeah, uh, so, uh, the city would have no, this would kind of go across to us as well. Uh, and, uh, and, and that, uh, could be installed by next summer. We have, yeah, and then it, so it brings water closer to the neighborhoods. And we've had neighborhoods back there that have asked for water, and it's just, we haven't been able to get it there. Uh, we think it's just, it's gonna be a little bit plus for the city. So, that's what's going on with those projects. So, I'll keep you, I'll keep you abreast as we go forward. Uh, okay, and then on to a very technical topic, trick-or-treat. Trick-or-treat, and if we post this, I, I think it's already up on our site, but I'll make sure you read about it. It will be, uh, in Manchester Schools, uh, Saturday, October twenty-sixth. Manchester Schools, Norton Schools, and Coventry Schools are all on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. Manchester Schools are five to eight PM, so if you're in Manchester School District. Norton Schools are from five to seven PM, and Coventry Schools are from five-thirty to eight PM. So, that means if you go to Norton first, you finish up in Norton, you can still get to... Uh, and Northwest, they're doing theirs, traditionalists that they are, on Halloween, Thursday, October thirty-first, from six o'clock to eight PM. So, that's what's going on with trick-or-treat. Uh, and finally, a word you guys always like to hear me say. Uh, we did, uh, we do have board openings. As you know, uh, there, there, each year, somebody, and these are all five-year terms, so somebody rolls off the planning and zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals, Parks and Rec, um, the Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board. I gotta look at the terms on that. Now, I have to look at the term on that, because I didn't write that one down. Uh, in any event, we, uh, we posted a notice of that, and we posted the application online, and we're inviting anybody who'd be interested. We put a brief description of, of each one of those commissions, and what their expectations are, and what the compensation is. And, uh, I did not put a, a, an application deadline, but we'll probably do that at some point, so there'll be time, if, you know, whatever, when we get applications in, whatever, however council wants to proceed. Uh, this year, the parks, uh, that one staggers back and forth, but it's a mayor appointment. Well, BCA and planning and zoning, they're all mayor appointments, as you guys know, uh, subject to the approval of council. So, I make the recommendation to you, you guys do the approval. I'm inviting you into the screening process before I make the recommendation, uh, to, so that you can screen as well, the candidates. If you wanna talk, interview some people, or, you know, I'll follow your lead on that. The, uh, the parks, uh, does, those positions alternate between some of them mayor, some of the council. This, this year, the five-year term is a mayor's appointment, so, although the alternate is a council's appointment. So, we'll follow the same, uh, same procedure there as well. So, we'll invite interested parties to, to apply, and that's how we'll work to try to fill these positions. Uh, and that's all I got.
All right. Next, uh, next up is the financials, too.
Um, the main thing I wanted to discuss with you is, a little bit, is the budget. Uh, we had our budget meeting last week, all day, on Thursday. Um, thankfully, um, Gavin and Barry and Kevin were able to make it, and that's always helpful for them to see the process that we go through, uh, with each department. We are still working on them. We did, we went through it with every department, we talked about their capital projects, um, how they were gonna... Obviously, we have a big increase in, uh, personal services with the new contracts, and how we were going to make all that fit together and be able to pay for that. So, we're, we are gonna be having some more discussions with the department heads because we're waiting on some numbers. We don't have our insurance num, we have an insurance number, but not the, all of the insurance numbers that we're, that we're seeking. Um, we may have, then we'll know better what we're going to do. So, I'm slowly but surely sifting through everybody's numbers and talking to them individually, and then as soon as we've got some more about insurance, we'll be, we'll be talking again. But as soon as I have those general numbers in a draft form, I will pass them along to you so that we can also discuss them again if, if necessary. And then, of course, the process is to give you at least three meetings before the end of the year, which they need to be passed before the end of the year, um, so that they're in place for January first. You will have them in, you will get all the spreadsheets ahead of time to look over, and then that will be translated, which is in here, translated into the actual resolution, which will look very different, uh, but have, the tables will be the same because that's how they're built. Um, and with the resolution, it's basically made up of personal ser, personnel services and all the other charges. And that way, if need be, during the course of the year, uh, if I need to transfer appropriations, not money, from one line to the next to cover some things, then I can do that without coming to you and asking you, because you've already allowed me to have that much money in that area or in the other services charges. So, um, we used to have to do it all the time, where, where every time I had to make a transfer, and somebody ran out of appropriation in one line, we had to come to you guys before it had a hand, and council said, no, that's, we don't need to do that. What can we do? So, we got with the auditor, and that was their answer to, for that. But we are working on the budgets, believe me. We had a budget, uh, meeting today with- We had a budget meeting today with part of finance, just going over kind of things for the future and planning. So we are definitely working on information that we heard, that you, those of you who were there, already got, and we will update you as soon as we have the rest of that information. I'm checking over those numbers and like I said, waiting for our, to know what we're going to do with our something, with our insurance.
If I can chime in?
Sure.
Two things. Number one, I just run a notice myself to remember that we do a blanket resolution like we did in the past to cover a lot of those capital purchases. That was a positive suggestion, it was a good suggestion, it worked well, and save us some paperwork and make things a little easier. And the second thing we've talked about is this, that when we, when we get this budget under our belt and if we, if we get to you, even if we get to the second meeting in November, the third meeting will be December 18th, so we still have time if it's, if we're ready. The first meeting, we've got three weeks till the next meeting, so if it's ready before then, we'll introduce it on the second. Otherwise, it'll be the 18th. I guess it'll be the third. Anyway. So what we want to follow that with, and probably what we're talking about is, you know, like, you know, when we get this budget done in December, early part of January, sometime in January, they have a workshop with council, open to the public, not for public participation, but for public attendance, and, and really take a hard look and talk about where we are, you know, what's the future hold, you know, what are the spending trends, you know, what are, what's the forecast, and, and what course we want to follow to keep ourselves physically sound. So we'll, we'll plan on that. Our municipal advisor is coming on board, and I would think, and then we have some pretty solid projections as well. So I think we'll have all the pieces to be able to do that, and I think it's, we're at that point as a city. And I think we can have a real good information session and collectively chart that course going forward. So we'll keep that on the radar as well. I'm sorry, back to you.
No, that's okay. And with the, with the capital project items, we're also honing down on that, on where the, those items are going to come from. For example, we were talking about the cameras today, which police had on there. Capital budgets for three cameras over a couple of different years. And so we're, we were talking about putting that in as one project for the building rather than just the police putting that on as three at a time, because we really need to update all the cameras in the building, they don't work well. And, and they're, they're necessary. So we've gotten folks on that, and Steve, again, helped with that, but he's like our go-to IT kind of guy, in-house IT guy. So we've been working on those kinds of things, too. So it is a work in progress, but we're hoping to have some information on the insurance here next week or so. So, from a couple of different sources, so we will keep you abreast of that, but that's the major focus for right now. So if you have any questions, please let me know. I will keep you updated.
Thank you. Any old business?
Last meeting or meeting before, I asked about getting an audit of council requirements that, and you said you were going to talk to Diane. Have she had, do you know what she's had up to do to?
She has, and if you will let...
Part of that, a lot of good dialogue went back and forth, and it's good to hear from the department heads and hear from them what their needs are and stuff. Kind of following up with the, the council workshop on the budget, do we want to do that after the budget or maybe do it before, once you get the numbers in? Because I know we had Lloyd hone in on the number for street projects and stuff like that. That, that may be a good sounding board to talk about the future.
My thinking on that is this, that we'll have the opportunity of three readings to discuss the action this year's budget. And where, where I'm interested in is, you know, okay, this is where we are, that's a snapshot, we'll determine that when we adopt this budget. I think we'll have the advantage of some, some statistical data. We can do our own estimates and we're doing them, but from, from our, from our financial advisor, that'll be another important tool. We'll also have a little bit, we'll be a little closer, particularly if we get to the end of the year, we'll really know exactly what we did have revenues, not just projected. So I just think we'll have more information, I think it'll be more fruitful as, you know, once we get past the budget. And, and the, the budget discussions themselves then could take place during the, during the three readings.
So then we can do that formal, I call it formal workshop after, but even when we get the first rendition of the budget, if anybody would like to leave and set up, we'll be here and go over it, because I know, especially with the newer guys, it may be good to go like line by line and let them know where, let them get good ideas of where the money goes and how it's generated and so on.
Maybe just a council workshop, because Paul's not interested in, because I think it would help everybody.
Yeah, we kind of did that earlier in the spring a little bit, and I think it was very beneficial.
I do, too. I think it would be against...
We could do that on a Wednesday evening or a Saturday or something, either of you guys, what works for you. Any other old business?
Yeah, to follow up on the question we had about the old cameras and upgrading the camera system in this, Mr. Keith, Mr. Wolf and myself went out to the Summit County Juvenile Court this last week and they demonstrated that equipment for us. I'd like to say thank you to Judge Keith Ozio and Mr. Schoffler, the IT director over there for showing us out there. But it was a great room and setup, actually. We were able to sort of set that up in a, in a fashion that was very similar to this room and see how it would act and how it would work in there. It seems pretty impressive. We were able to, you know, sit someone over there by where Mayor Adamson was, and when he was speaking, camera would go that way. We were able to see multiple council people at a time, or one person if one person was speaking. Was also able to put a, basically an image of the whole room roundabout at the same time. Looked like it was pretty good. Mr. Keith went ahead and followed up with owl systems, trying to determine maybe some preliminary costs and stuff, what were there, of what we might need. So I think it was pretty good.
It was awesome. It was really impressive. Thank you for doing it together. Mr. Keith was awesome to be there with you. Something needed, especially for, it's for our online community, right? Very impressive technology. And my preliminary discussions were fairly inexpensive, so it's, you know, looking forward to seeing more.
Yeah. Mr. Keith, you did a lot of legwork looking at that afterwards, what it might take to set that up in here. Do you have any comments?
You know, it, it's an impressive system. It kind of looks like AI, but it isn't really. It has eight microphones built into the unit, and it uses audio and some video cues to zero in on whomever is speaking at the time. It will create multiple screens if two people are speaking, it'll create a wide shot and a close-up of one person speaking. That part's real impressive. Whether, whether or not it'll post directly to Facebook, I texted and emailed Owl Labs and I haven't heard back from them yet. But it does work with Zoom, with Microsoft Teams, with Google Meet, and a lot of the other platforms, including LiveStream. Those are all, Google Meet's free, Teams is free, we can broadcast to those, those different platforms. The one downside of the Owl is that it doesn't actually record anything, and we do need to have a physical recording in order to comply with the state of Ohio for our minutes for each meeting. So we would have to have a laptop connected to that to be able to live view and record our meeting notes on that laptop computer. Also, we would mount it on the ceiling because the one that they have there is on a tripod in the middle of the room, and it doesn't look real good. But we would have to do that with our maintenance department, have them install a drop-down unit for us to mount the Owl. Other than that, it seems to work real well. The audio has more than one microphone, it has eight, as I mentioned before, so the audio quality is good. The detection is good for up to 18 feet, so it'll be okay for the council room here. Owl Labs has been around since 2014. In 2017, they introduced their first robotic camera, and then when COVID happened and people started having to do the work from home, it became extremely popular with their first model. Now they're up with a new model. The original model only shot in 720p, so the video wasn't great, but the new one will shoot in 1080, which we have the capability to use here in our council chamber. I happen to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Keith, how, how does that compare to the quote that I forwarded to you guys while that? Some of that is for owl cameras and the computer for recording and everything?
Yeah, it, it's a much simpler system. It doesn't require much maintenance, it's very easy to operate and set up. The system that we recorded last year is a lot more complicated and does require mixing. A person would have to be there to physically mix channels and cameras, although the video and audio quality would be better with a system like that. We're looking at $10,000 or $11,000 for that type of system, and for everything with the Owl, Owl, including having our IT person run a network wire through the ceiling, would be under $3,000.
Wow.
So how is the auto, audio quality to somebody outside the room watching on Zoom or whatever?
Well, the audio, the audio would come from the Owl and go into a laptop computer and then would go out by Wi-Fi, the same way that we do it right now. My suggestion would be that we buy one from Amazon and hook it up and see how it works, and if we don't like it, we send it back.
And one of the other concerns that we've had is, especially at a board meeting, if somebody is, is standing and giving testimony or talking to, to the board, the audience can't hear, can't always hear what that person's saying, especially if they're not holding a microphone. I know the Owl does not amplify, or does not, you know, have speakers for, for the room itself. Are there options to help improve that? And if, if the Owl is detecting voices and zooming around to that, if a person has a microphone, is the Owl searching for the speaker in the, in the ceiling versus the person's actually speaking?
Yeah, it does a directional location, so you're right. It may not work with an amplified system. So we would basically have to rely on, on just ambient sound.
Yeah, that's still part of, a piece of the puzzle.
Yeah.
We brought it up with, I'm sorry, with our tech guy when he was here, and I think Susan raised it, when, when we were done, because we had, if you're old enough to remember the TV series, Man, and there was a character, Ray Hard?
No, no, no.
That's, that's what they call Steve Cole. So that's his nickname over there, because he's, that's a great techno guy, he's been a real blessing. But between the two, we raised that up, it's, it's not this guy's in his orbit, but he knows some others, and so they're going to give us a couple of recommendations, too. And we talked, we talked specifically about the Owl, because I've seen that in action, and it's really, really impressive. And it's impressive on the video end of it, if you, you know, live stream and, I mean, actually, as you know, you know, you can participate from, from a distance with the Owl. The screen will have the, the people that are there, but you get that there. Well, we're, we're, we'll try to get some quotes in addition. And then see if we can have some further discussion to try to resolve the audio issue as well, because that's a big one.
Yeah. And I think, I think it's important that we try to maintain a Facebook, that's what the citizens are used to, and to, to try to move that to a different platform might be challenging. So I think it's important that, hopefully they'll get back to you and be, you know, a simple way to integrate it on Facebook.
Yeah, and if we can test one out, we'll answer all those questions.
Right. So yeah, let's order one from Amazon, plug it in, and then we send it back.
Well, you know, who does this stuff? And I'm not trying to add cost to it, but they may be dealing very much out here. And do a demonstration that way.
Yeah.
Any other old business? See, not many new business?
I'll throw out one piece of new business. The mayor was talking about some of the school events going on this coming October 26th and 27th, actually. Manchester's going to be opening up their new small theater for their first production of the year, and that production is Team Justice and the City Hall Supervillains. So I plan on attending, see if the supervillains need any assistance over there. So I wanted to give a call out the, the local thing going on.
And it's on the 26th and the 27th?
26th and 27th.
That would be a super fun night.
In addition to the new theater, they also are selling tickets online.
How nice, how nice.
You got any time on that?
Uh, they, it is 7:00 p.m. both nights.
That was a fun date night.
Any other new business? Close new business, we'll go into public comments, if you have any comments, the questions generated by anything you've heard tonight, please feel free to throw them up.
I had a couple of questions, I'm like, we were just talking about the Owl, assuming that's the Owl system for the cameras. So what would be used, if that's implemented, what would be used for an off-site meeting? Example, like the planning and zoning is going to be meeting down at the church for the water night.
They'd probably still set up cameras.
Still set up with this? And then it'd still go through the same process of being posted on Facebook? Is Facebook going to be the only social media?
As far as social media, I think we still have a YouTube page doing that.
All right, you can use any platform, including Facebook, according to what I've read so far. I haven't researched it completely yet, but I agree with Mr. Kotz that we need to continue posting Facebook because people are generally resistant to change, and it's a good idea to keep it consistent. But you can also post to any platform that will host live streaming.
I just had a question about Facebook, that's going to be the standard, because I know some people don't like Facebook and they refuse to be on it. So I know we can't please everyone, but I would just, is there any other plan to kind of do a duality of YouTube and Facebook?
I'm not sure if they're still posting on YouTube, are they?
Yeah, they can also post YouTube Live.
They can, but meetings are not currently being posted on YouTube.
No, no, we post our recorded version on YouTube.
So there's a YouTube channel that has our stuff on it.
There's YouTube, and since I've been away doing volleyball, officiating, that's where I would go to. The last meeting that I could find was March of this year. Now, I, you know, I don't know, there was someone else when I was looking up and I said most recent, and it only showed March, that comes on forward.
Look into that.
Yeah, I just said up there, if we stand going forward with the new software, what would take place for off-site meetings? I had another question if you don't mind. It was mentioned about the 93 sewer. Where is the path of the sewer lines and where are they going to go from the city? Are they going to come up this far to City Hall or are they going to end somewhere? I don't know.
I think there's the Grace Church.
Church runs where the lines were that you put on, so it's Grace Church, the sewer's going to go all the way down.
To Vanderhoek.
Vanderhoek down.
Eventually to Vanderhoek. This phase will go to Renninger. This first phase. Because that's where the connection is to Zellray.
And I think one thing that's going to change now, since they're using the Zellray plan as a main pump station and no longer doing the Vanderhoek pump station, hopefully the people along Vanderhoek will have the opportunity to tie in because now they're forcing it.
That's correct. But yeah, that's, that's about it.
Okay, so from Center or?
From Grace.
I know. From Grace, all the way down Manchester, tight, or, I'm sorry, not all the way down. Man, from Grace Church to the Zellray pump station?
This, this phase, this phase, the first phase will go from Grace Church to Renninger.
Okay.
There will also, in the second phase, the line then will extend There will also, in the second phase, the line then will extend from Renninger to Vanderhoof. So at its completion, it'll go from Vanderhoof to Grace Church on 93.
Okay. Thank you. Give me a moment, I'll check my notes, see if I had any other questions. And then just a, I think you mentioned this, mayor, when you were talking about the water coming up. That would be going into ODNR, there's a station that's coming up Catalina?
It's currently, yeah, it's currently at Catalina, that's the way they've run it in.
Right, where Aqua put it in?
Yeah, they came up Paulman, they went to Catalina, went up Catalina.
So all those residents along there are going to have the opportunity?
Yes.
To tie in and it's going to go into the park?
Right.
As a, as a?
Through Latham Lane.
Latham Lane, okay.
And that'll put it right in front of St. Luke's as well.
Okay, that is it.
All right, any other public comments, questions? All right, closed public comments. I believe we have a need for an executive session. Will you discuss the compensation of a public employee? Or do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
Seven, tell me your first and second.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stire?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Arman?
Yes.
All right, for anybody interested, our next counseling meeting will be number six at 6:00 PM, same location.